Good evening. My name is Jason Delisle. Seven o'clock, January 22nd, and I call this meeting to order. We'll first start off with a pledge of allegiance if we can stand.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll do introductions. To my right is Town Manager Grant Kleinhans.
Good evening.
Our Town Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
And Town Councilor Sean Harald.
Good evening.
And to my left, Town Attorney Bob Clutter.
Hello.
Our Clerk Treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Town Councilor Fens Knoblauch.
Good evening.
And our Vice President Nick Sturgeon.
Good evening.
Okay. So, first item here is our approval of minutes from January 8th. These minutes have been previously distributed to councilors. If there's no corrections.
Make a motion to approve as submitted.
I'll second it.
All right, so all those in favor of submitting, approving our minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that passes five zero. Okay. Next is our motion to approve the purchase of an automated mower for the street department. Grant?
Yes, thank you. So, this evening before you, we have a, we are requesting a motion to waive the bidding requirement and accepting this proposal from Brown Equipment Company in Evansville, Indiana, for the purchase of this automated robotic mower, which is a remote-controlled piece of equipment that we are purchasing due to efficiency. We have several steep areas along the trails, out at I-465 and the interchange, and it's dangerous for our employees to do that and takes a lot of staff time to go through that as they have to drive very slowly and be very cautious. So, last year as part of the budget, Street Commissioner asked for this. He felt that the cost saved from being able to do it more quickly, as well as the mitigation of risk, was worth the price. The price is $63,697.50. There also is a $5,000 deduction that, a rebate that will be given to us. So, our actual purchase price will be $58,697, but I'm asking you to approve the full amount and then they'll give us that rebate. But we do believe this will improve safety for our employees. It is a sole-source-provided unit. This is a larger, more industrial mower, and there are other companies in the United States that make much smaller units, but this is a large one. Think Brush Hog, large bed with a lot of mowing capacity. We're not looking for a 12-inch mower like you mow your yard with. So, this is a sole-source provider. I've been assured of that by our street commissioner. We have this quote and we recommend approval of that. But once again, requesting waiver of the bid requirement and accepting this proposal from Brown Equipment Company. I'll answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
And, and just for the record, we're talking, excuse me, the areas out by I-465, I-474, those large areas.
Yep. A majority of that elevated mowing with, with steep grades is there, but there's also some along the B&amp;O Trail and ultimately down the line. The town has agreed with the B&amp;O Trail Association to, or Speedway Trails, to accept that, that trail, and we will be in charge of maintaining and mowing. So, this would kind of be a future purchase as well to address those issues.
So, I'll make a motion to waive the bid requirements for this automated mower for
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, so that passes five zero.
I think one other requirement that I think is important is the safety aspect of this mower, you know, for, because of putting mowers in very predicitous areas and hills and is even within the town of Speedway and the, I think, a lot of ramps and down the B&amp;O Trail. It's pretty easy to flip a mower, and this will help protect our employees and save us in the long run because you can do it a lot more efficient and a lot faster.
Yeah, sorry, I kind of jumped the gun there for a discussion.
That's all right.
Thanks for adding that. Okay, our next item is approval of quote from National Water Service, Services for the rehabilitation of Well 15. Grant?
Yes, thank you. So, this, we discussed this a couple of weeks ago. I had emailed the council. So, we, we have multiple wells around the community. A majority of our water is received from groundwater. We also use surface water off of Eagle Creek, but a majority of our water usage, particularly through the winter months when it's frozen and cold, is from our groundwater plants. As you know, groundwater is always hard, full of iron, other minerals, and it does do damage to pumps and piping and other items over time. These wells, we typically annually, we don't inspect all of them. We kind of do a rotating cycle where we'll have the pumps pulled, we'll inspect the depths and the capacity and the pumping, the water quality, et cetera. One of the ones that we pulled out recently was this well number 15 pump, and there are pictures showing the clogged nature, well, they're not attached, but I did show those to the council, the iron that had built up. So, we, we have requested this proposal from NWS National Water Services. This is a company that we have used a lot of times over the past eight or 10 years. Their proposal is in the amount of $27,500, which leads to them pulling the pump, rehabbing it, testing it, doing pumping tests on it before and then after rehab, and then we would have to make the decision, does the pump need to be replaced, gotten rid of, or can it be used again? I know I was asked the question, can we just buy a new pump? We could, but we really feel like the pumps probably just need some rehabbing and cleaning and, and general maintenance. The other thing is there's about four foot of silt that is built up in the very bottom of that well. That impacts the amount of gallon of water that we get. This well should pump somewhere between 500 to 750 gallons per minute. It is down to about 250 to 300, so it's at about half of its ultimate capacity. So, we're recommending approval of this proposal, which will be the rehab, pulling, cleaning of that well, and then we'll make the decision based on that test and the results to determine whether we buy a new pump or not. And these are not just small pumps. These are big pumps that, they're basically trash pumps. They're intended to pump anything that goes through them, so minerals, sand, dirt, all of that stuff will get pumped through and then filtered out through that process. I just, 27.5 is a fraction of what that new pump will, will cost. A new pump somewhere, depending on the size, $50,000 to $100,000 is a pretty reasonable cost for a big, high-capacity 500 to 750 gallon-per-minute pump.
Perfect. Yeah, and I think I was the one that asked, asked about that. So, I appreciate you looking into that, just so we could understand the, the benefits and costs there. So, thank you.
I guess my question is, was just, you know, is, is part of this, part of the budget every year?
Yeah.
Obviously, looking at a few of them and just knowing, okay, we're probably going to have some.
Yes, so we, we estimate, right?
Yeah.
And we put somewhere between $50,000 to $100,000 for these types of activities. We look at two to three wells per year. Some wells are deeper, they cost more, it's a guesstimate.
Right. Okay.
And then we rotate those. We probably have upwards of 20 operating wells throughout the community, so it's something we have to do every year.
Okay.
Okay, I want to make a motion for the approval of well number 15 rehabilitation.
I'll second that.
As stated in the, in the quote.
Okay, I'll second.
All right. So, we have a first and a second. Do we, I think we already had some discussion, any other discussion, questions? Okay.
What's the, what's the timeframe on this?
Once we get it to them tomorrow, my guess is in the next couple of weeks, they'll be out to start that rehab and an inspection.
Okay.
It, it all depends though on weather. If it gets really cold again, that may be delayed a little bit.
Yeah. And where did you say well 15 is?
You know, I'm, I should have asked that.
Okay. I, I wasn't sure if we.
I believe it's in, it's in Leonard Park, but.
Okay.
I'm trying to look for verification of that.
Let's just look around town.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Okay.
I don't see that in my notes.
I think it is, Grant.
Leonard. Okay.
All right, I'll call for a vote. So, all those in favor of approval of our quote, say aye.
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 Those opposed, so that passes five zero. All right. Approval of a usage agreement with the Marion County Election Board for the use of the Speedway Municipal Center for primary and general elections in 2024. Okay.
Yes, thank you. So, this is annually, since we've been a town, we've typically hosted either at the former Town Hall on Lynnhurst or at our new municipal center, we host election polling places. So, this is a standard agreement. This is the one that we've done for the past multiple years. It's an online agreement. We have filled that out. If you approve this tonight, we will then go ahead and finalize that and upload that, and they will, they don't need to come out and do their inspection. They're familiar with the, we have talked to them about trying to improve the flow of, of the voting. We have noticed that's an issue and, and we will be proactively telling them, we think this is the way you need to do it. I want to point out though that they don't have to do what I say, right? Just because we give them permission to use our building, they have to keep, treat it nicely, but they do their operations the way they do their operations.
Can we lock the doors in certain areas?
We could, we could, but then residents might be upset because they can't vote, so.
I don't understand why they don't use this larger room.
I, I would agree with you, yeah.
And that was one of the things from this past election. There was a 45-minute wait at one point.
Yep.
Because it's all down to that.
Yep.
Where it could have been much.
Agreed.
Better through here.
Yeah. And, and I will mention that to them again, and we'll, we'll see if they are open to that.
Kim, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move the approval of a usage agreement with the Marion County Election Board for the use, use of the Speedway Municipal Center for primary and general elections in 2024.
I'll second.
All right, we have a, a motion and a second. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five zero.
And once they receive this agreement, they will do their notices. They're required to notice it, give people notice, voters notice, and then we will also do press releases because primary election's not that far away.
Right. Okay, our next item is approval of selection of consulting firm for the CSO expansion planning and design services request for proposal. Grant?
Yeah, I realize I'm every item on the agenda tonight, so we'll rectify that in the future.
Pretty much a lot.
As you know, I've, I've explained to the council, we are under an agreed order with IDAM for the wastewater plant, mainly due to the fact that in certain wet weather conditions, we have had an overflow or two over the past couple of years. They don't believe that, that our permit allows that. We have argued with them that that's not the case. I, I don't know that I want to go into that because we are in the agreed order, there's not much else we can do. Under that agreed order, we are required to do projects that will address their concern of those sewer overflow. And I, I want to point out one thing, those sewer overflows only come when we've had significant amount of rains over an extended period of time, say a week, and we've had one or two, three-quarters inch to one and a half inch events. Also, sometimes in the spring, as it's still frozen and the ground doesn't absorb water as much, that is when those overflows have happened. We have had no more than one or two of those per year, and there are larger facilities than us that have more. I'm just pointing, pointing that out. But I will, I'll stop, we'll move on. But we have to do a project to address that. We've identified four different projects that involve putting in some new equipment at the, at the wastewater plant, using some existing storage there, a couple of other items that we believe will help mitigate those concerns and issues. We have to select an engineering firm to help us do that. We actually issued an RFP in late November. It was due in middle of December. We have reviewed that, scored that over the past month, and we are here this evening to recommend to you the selection of RQAW for this CSO guidance planning process. You can see the scoring sheet. They scored the highest, although I will say most of the scores were within one to one and a half points. I think that the engineering firms that submitted to us are good, reputable engineering firms. We felt RQAW brought the best proposal to the table, a very reasonable fee, and we have used them in the past on non-wastewater-related issues, matters, and they've done a good job for us. Our wastewater superintendent also worked with them in his previous community and highly recommended them. So, with that tonight, we're recommending RQAW. We are asking the council to approve their selection and then direct staff to negotiate a contract and a fee for that process. Now, the timeline for that says that we will be ready in the spring of next year with a selected project and have that designed and ready to go potentially to construction in 2025. We have to have that built and ready. Trying to remember, I think it's the end of 2027. So, we've got about five years total to do that, and that clock started ticking in November of last year. So, with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have and go from there. So, thank you.
And more for just everybody's awareness, the IDAM project or the folks on their side are going to be, I, well, how do I want to put this? You guys will be communicating this.
Oh, yes.
Project with them to make sure that.
Yep.
It absolutely fits.
Yep.
Exactly what they.
Yeah, it will have to be not only discussed with them, but permitted by them, so we will have to get their input throughout that process. Yep. And, and the fees for this portion of the job are somewhere between $80,000 and $100,000. It, it involves some sewer modeling, a PER, which is called a preliminary engineering report, and a cost estimate for that project. So, that's the preliminary, and then the rest after that will be a design fee. That ranges 300 to 350, and that's something that we will negotiate. Typically, engineers are anywhere from 12% to 18% of a project's construction cost. We like to be somewhere down near the, the bottom of that range, and that will be part of our negotiations as we discuss that with RQAW.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the approval of RQAW's consulting firm for the CSO expansion planning and design services as requested.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. We've, I think we've already had our discussion.
Sure, sorry.
There. No, that's okay. That's okay. Yeah.
Parliamentary procedure is always something that we'll, we'll work on, right?
Yeah.
So, go ahead and call for a vote here. So, all in favor of approving this appoint, I'm sorry, a selection of the consulting firm for the CSO expansion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that passes five zero. Our next item, approval of appointment to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy and Technical Committees. Grant?
Thank you. I believe this is my final item, so you won't have to hear from me anymore. Annually, we are asked to make a couple of appointees to this Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy and Technical Committee. The policy and technical committee work hand and glove in administering the business of the planning organization, which includes giving out dollars in the form of grants, making recommendations to state legislators on changes required, funding formulas, et cetera. I have served at the will of the council on that commission since I've been here for the past two and a half years. And then Rob Wetniet, as our street commissioner, serves on the, I serve on the policy, Rob on the technical. We also have backups, so Jason, I didn't discuss this with you, but it typically is the town council president. The only way you would have to go to a meeting is one, if you wanted to, and two, if I somehow were indisposed for whatever reason. And then also as our second for the street, it's Assistant Street Commissioner Jared Sutton. So, we're asking for you to approve those appointments. I will then sign this letter, attach the minutes, and send that off to IMPO for their acceptance. That group meets every other month, so six times per year. I attend at least five out of the six per year. Sometimes things come up where I can't, but it is a very important organization, and we have tried to establish a good relationship with there. So, if you want to go, that is fine. We just do need to go as often as we can.
All right, do we have a, a motion?
I'll move to approve the appointments to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy and Technical Committees as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion or questions around those appointments?
I guess for my edification, you've mentioned that this is important. What exactly.
Yep.
Do you guys talk about on the policy and in the tech?
So, we, we are a member of that organization, which is all nine of the counties around Indianapolis, including Marion County. They receive federal highway administration dollars that have to be distributed by what's called an organized metropolitan planning organization. There are about half a dozen in the state, Terre Haute, Bloomington, Columbus, New Albany, trying to remember the one, Anderson has one, and then there's one up north. So, that's the conduit through which these federal highway grant dollars come, and they have to set up standards and programs to then grant those dollars to the various partner organizations to do projects. So, for instance, the town of Speedway, for the first time in about five years, we received $2.2 million two years ago for a pedestrian improvement project out on Crawfordsville Road to allow people to cross from the south side to the north side to get to all the shopping, particularly the grocery store, and we were granted an 80/20 match on that, on that grant. We actually will have a public information meeting in February on that because that will go to bid in December and will be constructed next year. So, we are working on finalizing that design. So, so that's the biggest work that they do, but then they also have other transportation-related. They funded multiple large studies, the rapid transit that's gone on, the purple line and the blue line and the red line. All those improvements were planned and participated in with the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, that was long, long-winded. I could have said money, federals, roads. Could have said that.
All right, anything else? Okay, I'll call for a vote. So, all in favor of approving our appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five zero. All right, thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
Next is our approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Thank you. I am asking for two utility adjustments and the approval of claims, both for the period of January 4th through January 17th, 2024. The claims are on 11 pages and total $3,211,431.45.
You have a motion to approve?
I just have a quick question, just since this is our first time seeing like this, like adjusted the two here, I guess just explain what that, this little paper is versus what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, these are examples of the most common adjustments.
Okay.
That you'll be asked to approve, which is, I think, partly a matter of grace and partly a matter of common sense.
Okay.
So, obviously, we, we bill for water and for sewer. If a utility customer can demonstrate to us that they had a water leak and that they've repaired it, then we will adjust their sewer portion of the bill upon them showing the documentation that they repaired it, under the theory that that water wasn't going down the sewer anyways. So, again, it's, it's an accommodation, also a matter of grace, I think, a little bit because sometimes people can rack up significant bills in a given month before they realize there, there's a problem. If, if your toilet's leaking or something like that, it can get very expensive very quickly.
Okay.
In theory, a large portion of that water wasn't actually getting down the sewer anyways.
Right. So, then as the town, you say, okay, we're going to waive that large sum, because this one, one is pretty large. I would be shocked if I got that.
Right. Again, we're only adjusting the sewer portion.
Okay.
Because they did use the water.
Right. Right. Okay.
I mean, they maybe didn't use it well.
Right.
But it did cost us that water, so.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the approval of the claims and adjustments as submitted by our town clerk treasurer.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion, questions? I know we didn't have utility adjustments last month, so it's first time we're, or last meeting, so it's the first time we're seeing those. But thank you, Philip. Anything else? Okay, I'll call a vote here. So, all in favor of approving our claims and utility adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five zero. Okay, Town Manager, report.
I have two items. I'll try to make them very, very brief. I, I did want to inform the council and the community that we held our first quarter casual conversations with the town manager. I hate that name, just going to put that out on the record. But we had 17 residents that showed up last Wednesday evening from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, asking questions about anything from crime, barking dogs, to street conditions, speeding, et cetera. We do three or four of those a year. I think it's a great opportunity for people to come in, share concerns. We, we try to make it a relaxed environment. We never challenge, we listen, and then we try to either answer that question now or provide information at a later point. I've got some people that are either fans or they have nothing better to do, but they keep coming. We, we had one row, the, the five people keep coming, but our next one will probably be in June, just after the race. The second item that I have is the State of the Town Address is scheduled for Monday, February the 5th, so that will be not next week, but the following week. That will be your first opportunity to experience that grand and glorious event. We'll have about 100 people packed into here. It will be a standing room only. I know the Lions Club is offering refreshments, and it'll be a grand time, lasts about an hour, hour and 10 minutes, but I think it's a great opportunity to share with the community the positive things that we've accomplished together over the past year. Bill and Brian do a great job putting kind of a year highlight video together. We'll watch that. I think this year it's 10 or 12 minutes, so I, we may have to end up cutting that short, but it's a nice video, they do a great job, and then that will be put out on, along with the video, out on our YouTube channel as well as our local cable access. So, that is from, I'm forgetting the time, 6:30, I believe.
Yes, 6:30.
To approximately 7:30 on Monday, February the 5th. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Grant. All right, report from council members. Start up, Sarah.
Ladies first again.
That's right.
Yeah, I was going to mention the State of the Town. I know, obviously, this will be our first time on this side. Coming last year was a really fun event. I think everyone always loves to be in a room with Doug Bowles, so any, you know, excuse to.
to be with him is always cool. So I know he'll be here and lots of other community members as well. So just a great informative night to see what all, you know, in a snapshot, what happened last year and where we're going. So, yeah, mark your calendars for that. And then the other thing I have, I saw the event coming up, is the pancake breakfast with the Lions Club. So I know I enjoy that event, so do my children. So I think it's like $20 to come out for your family. It's a great event. Again, you just see a lot of people and do, you know, support the Lions Club because they do so much for our town. So that is, I believe it's 8 to 11. There's a ton of vendors as well. So last year, they lined the halls of the high school, so bring cash too, because my kids quickly spent that as well. So, yeah, that's a fun event, especially when it's cold in the winter, so, yeah, that's all I have.
Everyone loves pancakes.
Yeah, same.
All right, thank you. Councilor Harold?
Just two quick things. I just wanted to extend a thank you to Grant for the casual conversations. I know that's an additional service that you offer to the town and giving everybody the opportunity to get out and voice their questions and concerns and everything. So thank you for doing that and looking forward to another one here in June, and hopefully have good attendance for that one as well. So thank you so much. And then the second one, the date is now escaping, but we've also got Mardi Gras on Main coming up here in a few weeks.
February 17th.
February 17th. So again, just trying to keep in mind all of the great fun things we have coming up here in May, or in May, before May, but coming up here in the town on Main Street. So be sure to make it out there for Mardi Gras on Main.
All right, thank you. Councilor Noblet?
Good evening. I just want to, just wish everybody stay warm in these cold days, you know, that we've been experiencing here in the town Speedway. And I think our street department has done an excellent job of salting the streets and, you know, making everyone safe. It's a lot of work when, especially when you get hit at one time, and we have such cold weather, but it seems like everything is working well. And again, our streets look a lot better than our big cousin in Indianapolis. So I just also want to add that that night, the Mardi Gras on the Main Street is also going to be like a 100-day celebration to the 500 this year. So it'd be another opportunity for people in the town to come out and spend their money at their favorite restaurant on Main Street. Appreciate it, that's all.
All right, thank you. Vice President Sargent?
My fellow council over there stole my Lions Club. That's okay, though. Looking forward to participating behind the scenes on that this year. Again, was part of the pancake-making crew last year. It's a good time, being a, you know, member of the Speedway Lions Club. It's a great organization that, again, does a lot of good for the town. Really don't have much. Did want to mention, I attended my first cable commission meeting last week. Those guys are great. I know we've got Brian and Bill supporting us. Also, they videotaped the high school games, girls' and boys' basketball. Actually, looking forward to get behind the camera here at a game in the next couple of weeks because they're needing some help. So looking to get my hands a little dirty, so to speak, but that's all I had.
Their equipment's insured.
Yeah. We'll note that in middle school, I did do videotape. So I got experience there.
All right, well, nothing from me, so at 7:32, I call our second meeting of 2024 adjourned. Thank you.